We're gonna go ahead and get started. I hope Nick will be here tonight. Taxi M.C. works. I'll be starting.
Can that check to me for the carbon ice inscription? We could add in about something else small, then we have a microcellular, so we can come up with a mix of two just like you know. I talked to Zach about it, he said you have continually that's the safe there for a backup.
What's that?
It might be the carbon I don't use. I didn't remember ever subscribing to it, and I couldn't show what we were ever paid for, so I don't know how. Because that's why I'm still confused.
Sure we was.
But we've always had it.
Had it.
They come up and say it was up for renewal.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
Is it a year or annual?
Uh, that one, the one I did was for three years.
Okay.
So. I went back through trying to find it, and I couldn't find it anywhere.
What'd you say that?
Oh. Now a couple nights I've come into town, it's like.
Yeah, sorry it comes.
Is this the log you were talking about when you asked me? Is that different? That's the one we get from the sheriff's office. In the back is the log for Brady.
All right, for our team.
Claims tonight, uh, for the town, $4,329.86. And for the waterworks, $8,635.57. Under old business, I have, uh, I have, or will be reporting that the sidewalks that we contracted with Nick are now finished, and we've got the barricades as well as the bollards that are 236. He ended up putting quite a bit deeper, longer bollards up there.
Okay.
He said if a semi still wants to take them down, I mean, they could, but he said, "I've got a lot of concrete and the depth is there, so."
They shouldn't notice it if they have it then?
Yes. We should get those painted here when the weather breaks and we can do that. Also, the house here at 136 South Main, uh, the owner was here a couple of weeks ago, and they've, uh, put a new roof on that house, so we don't have to worry about the issues with shingles blowing and tars blowing off the house and causing a problem. And my understanding, their plans are to continue that renovation of that house. Uh, I have mowing contract under old business. Do you have that for you?
Yes. $175 is what he put it in, and it's up. Last year was 155, but I didn't think that was bad considering.
The price of gas and stuff. And to fix things if something breaks right now, it's expensive. Who's that with? The same one as last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys didn't have a competition over a park for any?
No.
And I'm lucky he mows about once a week. When it does get dry, he'll skip a week, but he doesn't use it.
I thought he did a pretty good job last year.
Not much?
We've had him for.
Couple of years now.
Uh, longer than that.
Yeah, it's been a few years, yeah. I make a motion that we go ahead and accept this bid from P&amp;B for $175 per time of mowing.
Yes, I can through motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I have no other old business listed here. Do you have anything?
I don't look, I do.
Okay, I went back through my notes and I didn't find anything.
Uh, did you get the county sign that was talking about the road and stuff?
The, uh, no, from my side, those have not come in. They've been ordered.
Okay, they have been ordered.
Kathy ordered those, uh, two, three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago.
Yeah.
Okay, I know we talked about it last meeting, but I didn't know if they got.
Yeah.
Because you were still waiting on some quotes.
Yeah, I would be also, because it has been a little while. Okay, going to new business. Blair, do you want to talk to us about the ballpark and the youth associations?
Sure. Um, this year we've already had signups, we have a pretty good turnout. We split them again as well. We've got baseball and Coach Pitch over here as well as softball and Coach Pitch at Bloomingdale. We have five teams total here at Marshall, five at Bloomingdale, so it's pretty split, pretty equal. Pretty much they're starting games at the day of the year, and they're gonna go through the first week of June. So, um, I did walk over and kind of check out the field. The wind has done some damage to the fence, more to the fence.
More to the fence?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go, it did the same at Bloomingdale too, so I'm gonna try to get some quotes again this year and see if they're any better than what I came up with last year.
Okay.
And try to maybe if we combine them, maybe we can get a little bit of a discount because there's, there's bigger repair. Well, they're both about the same right now on the field, so. And the only other thing that I saw over there was that there's a board on one of the bleachers that does need replacing, so it's brought it out. So, I think it's about a 20-foot board that we need to, and it's on the second bleacher out, so it's not even the first one, so it's kind of dangerous right now.
Okay.
Um, we don't have, like I said, we don't have games until the end of April, but, um, I do have some forage groups also lined up who would like to do some community service, and so I suggested maybe they do some painting of the dugouts, the bleachers, so if we could get that board put in there, that they could come in and they'll paint everything and kind of freshen that up a little bit.
That'd be nice.
Which set of bleachers?
It's the bottom building.
The bottom, okay.
Yeah, that one right there. The other ones look good. I mean, they do paint it, but they were pretty, there was nothing I really saw there.
Probably we'll just ask and see if Brian Nelson will get that put on, yeah.
That would be good.
So hopefully we can take care of that yet this week. What do you have for foragers?
Um, well, we're gonna plan on doing something this week, or the following week after, or the week after Easter, but kind of weather dependent right now.
Right.
So, um, we're probably not gonna do anything this weekend, so it would probably be the weekend after Easter, I'm guessing, or sometime during that week.
Anything else major that needs to be done, or what your plans are? I mean, you need agro line more on the diamond, or is it in good shape?
No, we've, we've done, um, we get that donated a lot. I'll get it donated. So last year, we had it donated.
Okay.
Um, and we did that, so, right now it's kind of hard with the weather. We gotta let the weather break so we can, I know the one building looks really bad, but I can't really do anything with it until we could do something of weather, so.
Um, we haven't turned the water on yet, just kind of waiting for the weather to settle down. Is there anything you can think of within those buildings? I like the concession stand. The last time I was in there, the lighting in there is terrible. And I don't think it would take too much for us to go ahead and put some LEDs inscriptions in there and make it a nicer. And I, you know, we replaced the water heater last year. Anything else that you know of that you'd like to see taken care of?
No, not really. I mean, I mean, the lighting, check the lighting in the bathrooms too, because I think sometimes it could be a little gloomy in there as well.
Okay.
And I think if they have the list of those games today.
Yes, I definitely offer all the list of the home games that we have, so that we can coincide with mowing, so that.
Okay, that'd be good.
Good.
Could Brady and Mike, like, provide check those, keep that light?
Yes, he could do that also at the same time.
I'm saying they did start practice. Our insurance picked in the first of April.
Okay.
So there was a practice yesterday, and there actually was one practicing today right now, but they know the bathrooms are not, there's no water right now, so.
If you could pass the word on from the town, I really don't want people driving on the park property, just especially at this time of year. Uh, we really don't want it to be a parking lot. We know that certain times that it necessitates a coach or somebody taking care of the concession stand, maybe that that has to happen, but, uh, we've had years where that became a parking lot rather than walk from one end of a parking lot to another, they'd rather park on the grass.
Yeah.
So whatever you can do to assist there would be appreciated.
And I guess too, maybe thinking about that too, as far as parking goes, you know, there's some days that we have two games there.
Yeah.
And so is there certain areas to make sure that, you know, we keep people out of besides the, you know, the actual grass areas? But I mean, we don't want to embark on the church property as well, and kind of, how do we?
I think we've always just partnership with the federated church, and if they need overflow, they'll come into the park area and we kind of reciprocate that. It's just not easy to find more parking lot space over there. Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I mean, um, or if, I guess you know if there's something, a big event or something going on at the church, or we need to make sure we keep parking, maybe just let me know, so then that way we can try to work that out. Because I know we have a problem at Bloomingdale with the health center. Some nights they've had the later, and people were parking in their parking lot.
Right.
And so they weren't having any spots for their patients to come at the time, so, I mean, if somebody just wants to let me know, and then we can.
Share the bulk, the schedule with the church, and then that way they know.
Yeah, we could do that.
That way just.
Yeah, that'd be good.
And then just say, you know, let us know, and then we can let them know what's going on.
Yeah, I just cannot think of a, of a place to help them with parking, but I don't.
That's what I was thinking, and that's really a nice place to park, because it's already paved, so it's all right there.
Well, they can park on both sides of the church.
Church, yeah.
Okay. Well, like I said before, if you see something you would like for the town to address, please bring it to our attention, uh, because we definitely would like to do that. I got one picnic table to repair and get back up there that was broken. But I didn't see anything else when I looked around at there that was really terrible.
Yeah, no, I think we were gonna, uh, maybe a couple more trash barrels closer to the vault, the vault that hold the fire and stuff, so that.
We should be moving the dumpster in.
I called them yesterday or the day one.
Our problem is if we leave the dumpster out, then it becomes a community collection point.
I did notice that a couple of times, where it was full when they had just picked it up.
Yeah, the solar salt bags in the trash over there now, I'm thinking, must, do I have software in that?
No, we don't. I think that's a Brady push.
And one time I know who was using the dumpster over there, but I thought they quit, so.
Have we got the slide replaced yet?
No, and that's something.
That's on our agenda?
Yes, I think it's gonna take three or four of us to do it.
Well, we've got some pretty he'sp, strong guys.
Yeah.
Tyler's boys are very handy, too.
That's what we need, and they're just awkward pieces.
Well, that's.
But they're heavy, but they're awkward at the same time.
Okay.
So I would really like to get those taken care of this spring.
Okay.
I was gonna say, if you coincide with the practice, there's a bunch of dads that are there that should help.
So good, yeah.
And I would gladly probably help as well.
Yeah, okay.
I would need to get that, I notice my girlfriend every day too, that that gate's open, I'm gonna stop in, I don't know how they keep that shut.
Well.
I don't understand why they keep.
I don't either, but I mean, to keep kids in.
Yeah, I never wanted to padlock it.
No.
Because that is an access point for medical or.
Right.
Whatever, into that gate, so that's why we put it there if there was an accident on the playground. But you're right, they don't shut it.
Do we need a sign put up there, a little sign put on there? Please keep gate closed? As a friendly reminder? Sometimes it takes that for people to realize.
Yeah, that might, might be something we can do.
Your thoughts, Kathy? I mean.
I don't know, I just, I notice it's open when I go by there, but I don't know if it just got open once and never got closed again, or.
Fortunately, we have a number of kids that play on the playground during the day.
Yeah.
During the summer months, there's people up there using it.
Don't think about it that way, and it's from walking.
Probably. Don't think about it, don't notice. You just worry about the wind catching up those, my, my thought, with the winds we've been having lately.
The other thing we need to do, we need to walk another flag up there. I took the other one down, because it got ripped up in the winter, maybe, so I took it down.
Then that, do you go around put flags up? Don't eat flags?
I don't know if he does or not, does he? I know, that guy that did the side pole, isn't it? The side pole.
Yeah, I thought, yeah. Maybe not.
The scoreboard, does it still work? Okay. I have not participated in youth baseball for a long time and didn't know.
Yeah, it does not work. I, since I have been here, it has not worked. The plan is to hopefully kind of like what I did at Bloomingdale, and as we ended up getting the Operation Roundup grant to pay for scoreboards over there. So I've gotta write up a thing, find the price of the scoreboards. At least, I don't know if we could do both.
Right.
Right now, but at least try to do one and then the other one. But I also need to make sure electricity works to the scoreboards as well, so.
Right, and RMC did all of that electricity before. Don't know if they put it in conduit or not, but whatever you do up there, I mean, let us know beforehand, but the, the old school is buried just north of the concession stand. You cannot go, you can't cut through there, because you run into, Paul Collins, the concrete brick and everything in there. You, you dig down three feet, you're into it. So they had to go kind of around the concession stand and go over there. So going the other way with the bottom diamond, our septic tank is behind the restrooms out a little ways, and the finger system goes down. I think it may incorporate some of the outfield on that lower diamond, just outside the fence, but we'll have to watch that. Yeah, that would be, that would be good. Well, keep us apprised on anything that we can do to help.
Yeah.
We'd be glad to do it. And thank you for coming and sharing with us. Do you have any new business you thought, or Kathy, do you have anything? Let Brady talk here in a second, and then we'll take any questions from him.
I have, this is a quote from Scott.
Yes. He's pretty comfortable that was gonna work bad.
That's, yeah, said it would, so.
I looked at that. That's the quote for the meter head for the, over the firehouse, and that four-inch meter. And that would allow Kathy then to take readings on that.
That doesn't look too bad.
And that's with the 20-foot antenna on it, you see, I think it's six, but we short the long.
That is pretty deep. Our only problem is that, uh, meters comes after the fire. The fire, none of our fire hydrants are metered, and so anytime we fill up there, we always fill off that fire hydrant out to the front of the firehouse. So there's not an easy fix on that. I talked to Kenny about, every time we have a fire or fill, we just estimate what we're taking out there.
Won't this track it then?
No, it's after the.
Because here's the hydrant, and here's the meter, and here's the firehouse, so it's, yeah. And we really don't, I don't think, want to put another meter in.
And that's kind of what we're after, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. That's what I thought we were after.
I don't know what a new, I mean, we'd have to go before that. The shut-off is out of there, the main runs parallel to 236. There's a shut-off out there, so it would have to be between those points.
Yeah, that, that meter would be kind of minimal.
It'd be minimal, yeah. But, uh, I think it's worth putting in.
Yeah, I believe you, Kathy.
Yeah, I don't know how else to.
Neither that.
To do that, other than estimate.
I mean, estimates are great, I mean, as long as there's some way to account for the water that is used, if you makes that font that we do so much more accurate.
Yeah.
Are they good about you put along and have them, that they'll go fill it out?
I will try to reinforce that, yeah. If we have a fire, like we've had this winter, where we've got several departments coming in here, it's, it's quite a bit more difficult.
Right.
Uh, every time a tanker comes in, you're putting 3,000 gallon in it, and if you have four departments, you go through a lot of water real quick, and not necessarily that people are gonna know from Marshall.
And I try to mark on here if we have a fire, but I always don't know if they're coming in and doing that. If, and if I'm in Rockville, I mean, I know what's going on, if I'm down there working for the day, and.
Well, let's try the sheet, and we'll, we'll put that number, and we usually know about how many loads come from the fire scene back to Marshall if we're picking up water, and it's, it's gonna be an educated guess at the end of it.
Could that be a great improvement from where we're at now?
Exactly, okay.
Plus, you guys have a log over there that you could look at, Jason could look at. He could run and know that this was a big fire.
Right.
And at least he could say, "Hey, we had a big fire on this day." He could let me know, that I can mark it, and then, you know.
And we can come up with a pretty, I think, close estimate. I know the fire, we had a few tricks. We got pretty close. We set a million gallon with what we put on that fire, with the whole apartment, so, I mean, that gives you somewhere above.
That's a huge help, yeah.
I make a motion, and then we'll go ahead and purchase this reader.
I second the motion. We'll go ahead and just purchase it.
Motion's made and seconded to purchase the meter for the four-inch valve of the firehouse. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And we, we've got a habit leak starting somewhere.
We're going up, aren't we?
Yeah. And there was only one house that had any unusually, but it wasn't really, it was 10,000 gallons, but only two people lived there, so she's got something going on, but that's not justifying that.
Probably 13,000, 14,000 gallons high.
A day.
A day.
And that don't count for all the fires here lately.
We really haven't. I mean, that was back, what's that been, three weeks ago? Four weeks ago?
Yeah, when the Delph fire was really the last big one.
So, yeah, it's staying, it's staying.
Okay.
And then I've read so far this month, and yeah, it's staying up there.
I talked to my neighbor, because his son pump's running constantly. He said it, it was coming through the basement.
Uh, so it's.
So it's not like it had been.
So he's getting groundwater?
Yeah, he's getting groundwater, I'm pretty sure.
So, yeah, we're staying.
Yeah, but that's kind of sad compared to what we've been doing.
Yeah, it is. And then not to be able to find it, that's the other thing. And here's the adjustments. I'm still in the process of moving the meter, water meter for this month, so. That's the one I've got since the last time. It truly is a new thing. I'll tell you something tomorrow, I had some issues today with the system and stuff. And Brian's meter didn't read. But he went right for me, but it's not what we're reading on one. And I'm, yeah, it's reading there, but it's not reading to me. And I even did it individually. So I'm gonna call Johnny Seaman, because he's the one that's telling me why it's not reading.
Right. That was all brand new, wasn't it?
I s, yeah. Yeah, because I had like one, one eight or something on it. That just brings that out. I did that the same day, and so I just highlighted that top one. That just brings that out, I did that the same day, and so I just highlighted it top of the... And then here's the water, and the town bounces. I had it in February, and I just did it this morning. And we had made the first payment back from the water to town. So, you're gonna do this, but when are you leaving?
Sorry.
So, you check this out before you leave?
Yeah.
All right, then I'll do the thing and...
And I may take a copy that looks a little something like you know something.
Okay, that's quite a good idea. Lay it on my desk, that would all be the one. I'll lay it on my desk.
Brady? Uh, nothing really new, made a drug arrest. I bought a safety box for the...
Okay.
And then I was gonna talk to him about the reserve, but he's not here, so...
Okay.
You bought a safety box, you have a receipt and stuff for it?
I own, yeah.
You get it to me, I'll get you reimbursed in.
Okay.
So, yeah, so you're gonna put it in the office?
Yeah. And then I've got one quote that'll get you on a breathalyzer.
Okay, yeah. The other thing, that gun safe I talked to you about, if we want to go that route, if you want to find something...
Yeah, and then even this safety box could go inside of that for the smaller stuff.
Sure.
That'd be good, that'd be just an extra precaution for you.
Does Dunham's have gun safes?
They do. I don't know how small or cheap they're gonna be, I can go look.
Okay. I know I've looked at it on Academy Sports before, and I remember different places, but... Yeah, if you want to run something down like that and bring it back to us...
I'll take a few pictures.
Yeah. Dwayne doesn't carry them anymore, he used to.
There's a, that place in Clint might have them too, the rural camp.
Oh, yeah, it's not, it's tractor supply.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Bob Mar has one too, so...
And that other used to be the big R or whatever.
Yeah, Stock and Field.
That they carry in?
Yeah, oh yeah. So, and then you might be able to find them cheap online off the loop.
Yeah, that would give maybe deliver for free.
Yeah, but then I have to put it together probably.
So, everything's fine, car's fine, and nothing else reported there. We can't move, well, baseball's starting here, I mean, we're getting into that busy time, so anytime you could spare a little while in town, especially when all that's going on.
Yeah, it was a good thing.
So, we appreciate you talking to property owners and getting some things taken care of there.
There's, I got a couple more to do, and then we should be covered.
Okay. Anybody have anything for Brady? Tom?
I'm just slowly working on the audit, trying to get their numbers together. We've got a little training class next, ones that they're gonna sit through. Got a call into the Alliance of Indiana Water State, they're gonna do the validations this year. Kind of, you'll be able to, that's gonna cost us.
Okay.
Another thing is that the Alliance of Florida has a meeting that they want to be present at. There's one in Lafayette, maybe 24, it's not gonna, heading that way, so...
Okay.
Is there anything else you could do?
Do you need those registrations, the journey?
I do it all on Webinar if I can, so we're good.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thanks. Open up to people and others, yes.
I'm Judy, Judy Piercey. I live on Main, on West Side, and I was just wanting to find out what I'm concerned about, maybe the sun problem. So, I didn't speak with her, but...
And she had told me that you had, and I had taken a look at it. I have taken the liberty, given it, and seeking a price on that tree and had them take a look at it. I don't know that there's enough left of the tree not to take it down, and we hate to do that if we don't have to. But we are looking into it after Kathy told me. I looked at it, it lives on the outside, the street side of the sidewalk, so that would be town right away there.
And what's the progress on the sidewalks? Is there anything?
Nothing at this, at this time for that side. A little bit of history, when we redid Main Street, it was part of a grant, and there was only enough dollars in that grant to do the milling of Main Street, the paving of Main, North Main, the removal of sidewalks on one side, and removal of the trees on one side as we put in sidewalks. There was like two or three times as many trees on the west side as there was on the east side, so to get the most bang for our money, that's the way we had to go. So, we're looking at the future on something like that, but replacing that sidewalk right now, we're just not physically able to do that. And the same thing with the trees, we can't wholesale take, take the trees out right now, but, you know, this one, if you bring it to our attention, it looks like it's gonna have to be addressed.
Okay, for sure.
Yeah, but the sidewalk?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Right. You're welcome. And you live it?
One day you'll have it.
It is our hope, though, to try to end up and get that side done now, eventually.
Anyone else? Yeah, and I will, I will be down there sometime this week. What time do you get home in the evening?
I get home at four, but I'm off on Thursdays.
Okay.
But if I start Saturday, I gotta go get, I mean, I've got my clothes and everything else, but I didn't want my semen to have it sitting out there until, until I was ready to go.
The thought behind the building permit from the town's perspective was we were having people just put a driveway in over their water meters, or they were building a garage over the water main, or they were, you know, they were doing things that if we could help them not have to take that down, that was...
When we moved in, I know where my water line's at, because you guys put in water meters, I have, and I didn't know it was at the water meter, and I had that all to replace on my water line. So, I know exactly where the water line is.
Perfect, yeah.
And then I know where our sewer line's at, too, if you don't have any problems.
That was the other question, where that sewer?
Yeah, sewer line's on the north side of the house.
Okay.
Goes out, then the water line is at the north edge of my driveway next to the house.
Yeah, okay. The other is any drain that would go through that property. We have found over the years that there were a lot of drains put in by homeowners that was draining the street out front or draining onto another tile, and there's no, no records of that. And some of them, we've learned the hard way, we're sending them tomorrow, and then we don't know the others. I'm gonna check and make sure that Larry Harmon will be the only one that I know that might have anything where there is a drain going through there. I don't believe there was ever anything on that property, at least.
I don't, when we moved in, I went back, they went back at Port House 75 years from here, because somebody told us in my view, right away, between us and the house out of the center, there wasn't anything through there, so... So, yeah, that might be a little bit on the property I didn't want.
Yeah.
I basically, I just don't want any problems with anybody else's stuff coming along.
Right, okay.
And the garage would be on the south, south edge of my driveway.
My question would be, would you also, you using your current drive to access the building, or would you be...
Yeah, I will, yeah, I can add to that.
Okay, the reason I'm saying that is when we had sidewalks put in, we asked that they beef up wherever a drive was to at least five inches, and we just replaced the sidewalk over here that they drove a dump truck across and busted it because was meant for traffic. So, that's another thing, if you're gonna use your current drive, it's definitely strong enough.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, it's just that I can't afford that much more rock. I'm putting up this project, so...
Yeah, it's basically, today, raw prices.
Now, I will have a concrete truck, and we'll be crossing that sidewalk.
At your drive?
Yeah, I have a drive.
Yeah, you should be fine.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're gonna have a port, cement port, so...
Sure, yeah.
And I mean, I guess I could have a park on the road, but you're bringing it out, but I, my truck, my driveway could, and port concrete.
I, from what I haven't noticed anybody having a problem with the cement truck crossing at the proper place.
All right, yeah.
Well, and I mean, just come down that way since we've talked a little bit here, where things are, take a look, but that's the main intent, it's not to...
Oh, no, I understand.
Yeah, but I just meant for the purpose of the community to know that. What our purpose was is to help the homeowner not...
Sure.
Be a problem.
But I'm okay to start putting posts on Saturday, because I know a guy's coming.
Right.
With equipment, and when I get a guy with a tractor and a tractor, I'm a happy guy, so...
Sure, yeah. Well, you say you're off on Thursdays?
I'm off on Thursdays.
Okay, well, if you see any nosing around down there, don't let the bucked dog out.
Because I'm probably gonna be headed towards, I got the quote from NARS, but I get a better deal at Park County Number. And so, they beat NARS price, including the 11 percent, so... I've already ordered the trusses, I don't want the metal when I, when I get to that point, but... But I don't want to carry a ton of concrete, they're already in that concrete, so...
Good, I assure you, we're in good shape with what you already have done. You've done due diligence, you know where your property lines are, and those are the things that we would be asking. I know that's a pretty good sized lot there, so I doubt...
Yeah, we want to be close to the side property line.
Okay, that sounds good.
And I got that swell that comes through our yard. We're gonna put it parallel with our, even with our other garage, but the corner, it would be that swell, and I want the corner washed out, so...
Right.
So, we're gonna go parallel, or, yeah, parallel with that driveway.
Right, okay.
It'll be good.
Good.
And once he does, definitely say, yes, I've got a permit thing, I'll send back, so you'll have it there, that you'll know that everything is good, too, so, so, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I wanted to introduce myself, Jasmine Snow Raper.
Okay.
Rex Franklin's daughter.
Yes.
Doing what he's doing.
Yes.
And if anybody has any questions or concerns, hear.
It's nice to finally meet you, face to face, I've talked to you several times, yeah.
I notice you've put quite an effort into taking care of some things. What's your immediate plan on how? I know that you've got a lot to do, and we do appreciate the effort you've made. Are you going to continue with that process, I assume, if, okay?
That's the plan. The outside looks really bad, and then how the inside looks, just as bad. So, having a tough time getting both done at the same time, but taxes and everything's been paid off on it, and the city will be transferred one by one, and I will be living there for a while.
Okay. Your water meter, do you know where the meter pit is, shutting off your water? The only reason I'm asking that is there was a lot of trailers, semi-heavy equipment that went in and out of there, and even parked there in front yard. And I don't know what happened to the meter, whether it's been, if it's up at ground level or been buried, but that's, concerns me. Jason, I think, knows where they are.
Jason knows where it is, but I think it's on the east of that house on the driveway, thought.
Okay.
Somewhere, you, you also, are out there?
I'm not sure, I think there's one on the first driveway, right next to the house, I think there's somewhere there.
Okay.
I know Jason could walk, he could walk right to it, I mean, he's...
Yeah, that's what I would caution you, depending on what, just wanna go in and out of there. Yeah, we very much encourage you to continue with that cleanup. I know Brady has spoke to you, so... I drove down to the day to take a look and just get an idea, but there is quite a bit left to do, I understand. Thank you. Do you have any questions for the town, anything that you need to know?
I don't think so, just letting you know, I'm trying my hardest, it costs money.
Oh, yeah. Money and a lot of labor.
Exactly.
Anyone else, have your thing, go to the town. We'll stay in the gym, thank you.